Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxi. I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Tongonoxi City Council for April 17th, 2023. Ms. Huntington, would you call the roll and note that I'm present, please?
Yes, Mayor. Mr. Partridge?
Here.
Ms. McCutcheon?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Donnelly?
Here.
And Mr. Dale?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two on our agenda is the approval of minutes where we go over the meeting minutes from the previous meeting. Were there any questions, concerns, or conversation about the minutes for April 3rd?
I'd make a motion we approve of minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item three is the consent agenda where we go over the bill payments for the previous period. Are there any questions or concerns or conversation about the bill payments? Seeing none, I would appreciate, I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. McCutcheon, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item four is old business where we review previous business from previous meetings. This is also a chance where people who have signed up to speak before the deadline can speak for three minutes at the podium. Mr. Porter, did anyone sign up?
No signups, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then we'll just move on to the review, the revised proposed city procurement policy updates. Mr. Brackovich?
Thanks, Mayor. You'll probably recall the discussion on this item at the last city council meeting included staff's proposed changes to the existing purchasing policy. Those changes were primarily geared towards the monetary value limitations that had been in place for, I believe, about 17 years and just trying to account for the modern day cost of doing business and try not to create any delays. And if I recall correctly, there was a general air of support for that. There was, however, an interest in adding a provision related to conflict of interest. And so in the latest draft that's in the agenda packet, we've actually taken the last section or the lax, last section prior to getting into the federal grant language that was previously titled prohibitive or prohibition on accepting gratuities. And so we've struck through that language and we're proposing much more extensive language there that does also address gratuities in addition to language on conflict of interest. So some of the, the basics on the conflict of interest regard revolve around employee benefit, employee ownership, employee relationship to any entity that we might be doing business with. More on the gratuity side is related to business travel, whether their lunch or accepting tickets to something and, you know, how, how does that relate back to ensuring that that has no undue influence on companies that are trying to do business with us or are already doing business with the city. And so we've tried to incorporate all, incorporate all of those, I guess, specifics into this one section. I'd be happy to go through all of that in any detail if you need or answer any questions you might have about it. It does, it, it does go from one paragraph to about two pages now. It is also done in concert with the employee ethics provision and the employee manual, the personnel policy. We ensure that none of what we're proposing here is in conflict with that. It's not. In fact, the purchasing policy goes a little heavier into detail on some of these specific business transactions. Again, having said all that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. I know that all of us were, had a consensus anyway that something like this was needed. Does this satisfy our concerns, counsel?
Yeah, I'm, I just want to take the time to appreciate your efforts in addressing the issues I brought up last time. And I'm, I'm happy with, with the, the proposed changes.
Any other questions or comments?
George, counsel, legal counsel looked over that section?
I'm sorry, I mean...
Has legal counsel looked over that section?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no more conversation, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve the revised proposed city procurement policy including updated conflict of interest section.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to new business. Item A is consider approval of Leavenworth County Development Corporation 2023 funding distribution. Mr. Brackovich?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. This item, and let me make a couple of quick introductions. Lisa Hack with LCDC is here and Jeremy Gernmeyer, who's the chair of the LCDC board for the year, are both here tonight and would be happy to answer any questions you might have. You probably recall as we were developing our 2023 budget during the summer of '22, LCDC approached us with the request. Historically, the funding has been strictly limited to a formula that was developed based on population size. They had proposed in, for this year, adding flat fees, I believe of $10,000 to the cities of Tongonoxi and the city of Leavenworth because we have industrial or business parks that LCDC spends a great deal of time marketing to. And so that was the presentation we heard. In June, we did build that request into the budget that was approved by this body. And so we do have the funds available, but in typical fashion, any entity that's made that request, when it comes time to actually issue those funds during the year, we ask them to come back before the city council to again reaffirm that those are the funds that are required and give you an opportunity to ask them about the activities associated with that funding. So that's, staff would be happy to answer any other questions and I'm sure Lisa could do the same.
Thank you, Mr. Brackovich. Hi, Ms. Hack, how are you? Did you, did you have anything more to add?
Um, I would just say that I'm only looking forward to the next year. The last time I was here, as George said, I was not, I was in the assistant director role. Since then, I've moved into the director role. It took us a little time, but we filled my old position and we now have someone that's focused on working with those existing businesses. So I'm really excited about the future and what our team's going to be able to do. I'll be able, I have the time now to focus on that marketing for business attraction. I'm really excited about all the, the development that's occurred with Hills and with all the things that have happened in, in Urban Hess Business Center, including DL Granite and Design. And we're working on a couple of projects, one that's interested in the Tongonoxi Business Park and one that's interested in the Urban Hess Business Park. So I see a lot of exciting things coming. Other than that, I would say that we're just excited that we've now stood up the land search committee under the Port Authority. I'm working with them and their chair, the new chairs and Tongonoxi is at the table for those discussions to discuss if, if and if so, what site or sites may, they might recommend for potential new business park. Are there any other questions?
Counsel? I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, counsel, is there any questions or, or conversation about this item? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Leavenworth County Development Corporation 2023 funding distribution in the amount of $19,840.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for what you do for Tongonoxi.
Definitely. We appreciate your attention to our community.
Moving on to item B, consider approval of water utility resilience improvements purchases. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a couple of brief comments and we'll be happy to stand for any questions you might have. The item before you tonight is, is divided up into three parts, but it involves a purchase recommended from two different vendors. If you remember to la, last summer and a time when we were working diligently to prepare for the impact to the utility from a new customer at the scale of Hills Pet Nutrition at the business park, we were looking at ways that the city's water utility as a whole needed to be updated or improved in order to accommodate the new water tower that's currently under construction out. It's called the South Water Tower by BG Consultants, but we usually refer to it as the Business Park Water Tower. With that project coming to, I guess midpoint or close to, closer to the conclusion than the beginning, we do need to advance some of these improvements. And so what you see tonight are improvements that we refer to as utility resiliency improvements. In specific, there are two control valves, one to be installed at the middle school water tower site underground by our public works staff and the other to be installed at the ground storage tank at the water plant near the public works facility. These two control valves do what their name implies. They allow the staff of our utility or the pressure of the system to control where water supply is directed to either towers or, or our customers. What's important about these control valves and why they matter with the new tank has to do also with our timeline. So when we have the new tower online holding water, we'll be able to maintain system pressure for our users while we do the work to install this at the middle school water tower in particular. Until that tower's online, we can't install this equipment underground or we interrupt service and not have water pressure. What's also important about these control valves are they allow us to utilize the full capacity of the new water tower, whereas by their geography and how far apart they are in particular, we would otherwise, if this weren't installed, not utilize the top about 10 feet of the tower at the business park location when it's completed. So this equipment underground is what's going to help us control those system pieces and, and keep the water utility functioning at a high level of somewhat automation or also adaptability with our staff's input. In this case also, I wanted to point out, like I said, we are utilizing two different vendors. One, ESI Water or Engineered Systems Incorporated. They are currently the providers of several other similar valves in our system and it's our public works director Kent Heskett's desire that we stay with the same vendor for consistency and training and operation by our staff to stay in, in that product line from that vendor. In addition, the bypass fittings, which are essentially the equipment allowed for a bypass to be installed at the 12-inch middle school tower control valve, we are proposing going forward with Alatha Wind Water for that purchase, again for the same rationale with other similar pipe and other fitting commodities that we purchase regularly for our utility. When we look at our cost estimate, we were anticipating previously that this cost could be significantly more. We budgeted in the capital improvement plan for this year for more than the combined total of these three purchases, which is $73,550 of that $64,260 from ESI Water and $9,290 from Alatha Wind Water Company. Kent Heskett isn't here tonight, but he's spoken in depth with George and myself about this purchase. He's excited to move forward and, and like I said, he won't be able to move forward until our new tower is complete, but by ordering this equipment at this time, he doesn't anticipate any concerns with delivery occurring in time to install it soon after our new tower is online. Happy to take any other questions you might have about this item.
I appreciate staff standing ahead of this. This is a lot, a lot. Counsel, do you have any questions? Let's see, we need two motions for that, is it for this, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Stevens.
Sure. I would like to make a motion to authorize purchase of 12-inch altitude control valve associated, average, how do you say that? Anyway, the, the associated six-inch control valve and associated other fancy water things for, from ESI Water for an amount to exceed, not to exceed $64,260.
Does that motion meet the standards?
Yeah.
We were inspired by Mr. Dale last time.
All right, thank you.
Yes, there we go. I'm very, very fancy with all the, my water technology.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And for the second item, do we have a motion?
I got this one. All right. I make a motion to authorize a purchase of 12-inch, 12-inch altitude control valve bypass fittings from Alatha Wind Water Company for an amount not to exceed $9,290.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item C, ordinance 1511, consider approval of West Washington Street voluntary annexation petition. Mr. Brackovich?
Thanks, Mayor. So this item has a little bit of history with the county and the applicant is here tonight and I'm sure she would be happy to answer any questions if you have any at the end. So West Washington is, the name implies, is the portion of Washington on the west side of 2440. The city limits kind of really jog in and around a lot of properties in that location. The applicant's family is a property owner of a piece of property that is in the city limits that fronts Washington Street. They had an opportunity to buy two larger tracts of ground that were irregular in shape, that also had some share or some portion of frontage along Washington, as well as the second piece having some frontage along 2440. The family doesn't really have long-term development plans for that property. However, they did desire to split a parcel from the property that's most adjacent on the east side of their existing land to create a building site. So they went through the county process because the county had approved the county one corridor, county road one corridor plan that kind of shows a higher density residential product all around. I mean, it was kind of a, a general designation. And so this lower density doesn't quite match up with that. So the city staff had met with the applicant and gone through their desire to create this property. And if they did that, the need to then connect for city water services and city sanitary sewer services. They agreed to do that. However, the sanitary sewer is located at a distance greater than the amount called out for in city code or city ordinance, which would require connection. So in order to accomplish that, they would need to create a parcel slightly larger than three acres, which is the city's size limit to permit a septic sewer system. They'll still have to go through the county to do their percolation test to ensure that it's an appropriate site or that'll be placed appropriately. The county did ultimately approve their ability to take a three-acre piece out of that property. They worked their, the applicant's surveyor worked with city staff, however, to preserve enough of the entry feature on Washington back to the larger acreage associated with that parcel, should there ever be an opportunity to pursue that for development. So what they're doing tonight then is they got those county approvals and now they would like to annex this newly created, slightly larger than three-acre piece into the city limits so we can, they can proceed with building a single-family residence there and make the connection to city water as part of that process. Clear as mud? Yeah, good. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Rachel, I'm sure would be happy to answer any. I believe this is going to be her personal residence. So yeah, if you have any questions, let us know.
Good.
Oh, sorry. George, what pieces are in the city limits along, is everything in there along the city limits or is it bits and pieces like this or?
The, so it might be easiest if we could share a screen for the county GIS and while they're pulling that up, it, it, on the south side of West Washington, it, it jogs a little bit. It picks up a lot of the existing properties. And then as you move back towards 2440 where there's a couple of, I believe, church properties, those are all within the city limits. But these two irregular shaped pieces, at one point, well, I'm sorry, only one of the irregular shaped pieces is not. The other one is, but like I said, it's very difficult to explain. Close your eyes for a moment if you, and imagine a blue dotted line on the county GIS that shows city limits. So as we pull that up, I think it, it would be good to put it on the screen because it'll highlight exactly what's happening here. So with the addition of this piece into the city limits, there will just be a small sliver of access point onto West Washington that's not currently in the city limits. But again, the preservation of that swath of ground to access that larger tract in the rear or the larger piece of acreage in the rear was the, the critical piece, which they agreed to do. At some point, should it go into a more dense development, you know, the expectation would be to annex that into the city as well. And they would need to for access to sanitary sewers. Here we go.
So is there a special on that road?
Not to my knowledge.
Or when we chip, I remember when we chip sealed it, then we overlaid it.
Yeah, we did that as a, and we, well, we did, we actually did a overlay on that two years ago.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So it was in pretty bad shape, but we did that through city CMIP and just paid.
Chip sealed on, I thought there was a special put on or a, maybe, and I may be mistaken. I thought that group came in and that we put a special on it to get that paid for and it probably paid off.
I believe so. And I say this with all due respect, there was an, an old timer that told me about that years ago. That was, that there was something like that proposed and any property that touched or had frontage on Washington was supposed to have contributed to that. I believe these two large irregular shaped properties were owned by attorney, no offense, guys over there. And I think the story I heard was she just refused to participate. And so in the interest of just moving things along, the other owners signed off on it. And so, but I, I just wanted to acknowledge that that's, I had heard a similar story, but I believe it had paid off or expired years ago and had really nothing to do with this proposal.
So within the city limits, this is the only parcel that's not in the city limits? Now this, we are looking?
Correct. If you can see the blue dotted line, that is, and the county GIS system represents the existing city limits. So you can kind of see how it jogs along those property lines to the west and south. And then coming back, it picks up the other irregular piece that has the frontage on 2440, along with the two churches. And then there's that carve out. And you can see on the east side of 2440 where 12th Street is. I don't know if that goes that far south. Yeah, it does. And then there's a spot annexation later for the Army Reserve Center.
Mr. Brackovich, I'm sorry to ask you to do this, but could you get up and point to that?
Yeah, do we have a pointer?
That I can use.
Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Okay. Might be easier to.
That little skinny piece.
Yeah.
What we're leaving.
Leaving for the.
The little, that little skinny piece.
Piece is the piece that's for, no, is it not annexed in?
Ingress egress into.
Well, this is a voluntary annexation.
So. Can you all see the red dot?
Yes.
So what's highlighted is the newly created slightly over three acre parcel that they're asking to annex tonight. So. Right, George, I'm going to add the imagery there. Okay. So 2440, West Washington. So the blue line representing city limits, you can see how it kind of jogs. The two, the existing property was this piece here. That's the applicant's existing property. They acquired eight, which seven used to be part of eight, and that was the small area that they had frontage onto Washington. That was not in city limits. The other parcel they acquired is this piece, 2.03, but it is in city limits. So this was subject to the county's county road one corridor plan, which had a fairly high density residential product there. And sewers, although some of these projects, including West Village was the most recent, they're in excess of that limit, minimum required distance from existing sewers to force connection of this project. And so what they needed to do was create at least, again, a slightly larger than three acre parcel, knowing that if they were going to put a single-family residential unit there, they would need that amount of land to get city approval on a septic system per our water drain regulations. And so that's what they've done. So there's, it's hard to see here, but if we enlarged it, you would see that this ground was preserved as the access point that, thank you. So this is enough width with after city engineer and planner review that if the rest of the balance of the property here were ever to develop for a higher density residential, this could serve as access without engaging with KDOT about creating a new access point on 2440.
And is that piece in the city now?
This piece is.
But that, the piece that we're leaving?
Not yet, no.
Should we take that piece in with it?
We're just.
The access piece?
We hadn't really talked to them about it because they don't have development plans for it yet.
They're just asking for this tonight.
No, I understand that.
That's helpful, George. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for.
Okay. Okay, I have a better understanding of that now. Any other questions or conversation, counsel?
I'm guessing that there's public notice and all that stuff that goes out to neighbors and.
Yep. So I think a lot of that portion to do the split was all the public hearing process they went through with the county to be able to create a three acre parcel here. But we did get calls from the neighbors, even though they were notified by the county about what was being proposed here. And so we gave them the same explanation you heard this evening.
So our sewer stops at the church there in the south, north, east corner. And then the Baptist church across the street picks up sewer as well that goes down the creek there, I think. And then we don't have any other sewer anywhere else out there, do we?
No. I believe when we did the analysis, it was almost equal distance actually to go back up to West Village, southernmost manhole, as it was to go to the church access. But both of those exceeded that requirement of distance.
Anyone else? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance number 1511, including incorporating and annexing certain land in Leavenworth County, Kansas, in section 17, Township 11 South, range 21 East into the limits and boundaries of the city of Tongonoxi, Kansas.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to the city manager agenda, it's time for the 2023 March financial report. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. The financial report is included in the agenda packet, and it's also printed at the dais for your reference tonight. Through one quarter of 2023, we are in a good position in regards to revenues and expenditure levels. Net across all funds, we're at 31% of our revenue estimates for the year and 23% of expenditure budget authority, which is a good spot to be at this point. This month, we did include some lease purchase payments required March 1, and so the financial report reflects those. And our next debt service payments are owed starting in the month of July. So we've got a brief window without any of that activity ahead of us. We did also, as mentioned in previous discussions, with agenda item approvals, still do anticipate needing water and sewer capital funds to be slightly adjusted in budget authority this year, as well as the special highway fund. You'll recall, some of those items were unplanned purchases or contracts, and one was simply the calendar year issue with the water meters purchase that was approved back in late 2022, but is now being completed and paid this year. We do have about half of that stock delivered, and Kent's crews have been working really hard to get those installed. And we're very happy to report that the meter issue that we presented information about last winter, for the meters not functioning correctly, is being corrected in every circumstance with a new meter installation. So we're not quite to the midway point yet of those installs, but we're making progress, and that's making the no reads a much shorter list. So we're really thankful for that. And our staff also have expressed their appreciation in approving that purchase and making their jobs that much more efficient, too. So moving on in the report, to page, Pages 2 and 3 of the report illustrate for the major funds, general fund, water and sewer operations, special highway, debt bond and interest, and then for the utility and non-utility capital funds, annual revenues, budget, and year-to-date revenue compared to year-to-date revenue and expense last year. With that, we don't have anything of note to point out as a concern, but you would notice on Page 3, the Capital Projects Fund has a little over $400,000 expended, which was much more than last year at this time. That's simply a reflection of the accelerating pace of work and payments for the Church Street Bridge project, which, if you haven't driven by, is progressing really nicely, and we anticipate finishing that one up hopefully before the end of the first half of the year. So in quarter 2 of this year, we should be nearing completion on that project, which, again, was a little more than $600,000 in total. So we're really excited about that, and it's going to be a huge improvement if you haven't had a chance to see the progress so far. Moving forward in the report, Page 4 illustrates sales and use tax, which we always illustrate with great detail. The gist I wanted to share this month was for both city sales and use and the share of the county sales and use, we're currently between 4% and 6% ahead of our budget projections, which is a good spot to be this year. And we're still between 9% and 10% ahead of last year's pace. So we're really seeing some strong performance that does continue through all of last year and the beginning of this fiscal year as well. When we look at expenses in the general fund on Page 5 of the report, we're tracking this closely because as salaries and benefits are a huge part of our general fund, we want to make sure at the pace of the year, timing of the year, we're in the right position with the expense budget. And so we are at 23.8% of expenditure authority through this part of the year, which is less than 25%, and it's our target at this point. So we're happy to report that in particular. We already talked a little bit about the Capital Projects Fund, so I won't illustrate that point again on that page. So if you could turn your attention to Page 6 of 12, this is the sort of original or new, new material to share with you for this monthly report. We're highlighting two things in advance of the 2024 budget development that start kicking off in the next couple months, just so you can start to think about ideas and evaluate some options for utilization of some pretty unique funding. So the top of the page illustrates the city's Special Parks Fund, which, if you do recall, it's, it's a small revenue and budget authority fund in comparison to the city's larger funds, but it's a unique purpose that, that we're held to. According to state statute, half of the money we receive from the city's local alcohol liquor tax remittances from the state, so the tax applied to the sale of alcohol products in the city, half of that revenue has to be given to the general fund to support general services like police and fire. The other half is to set aside in the Special Parks Fund. So this fund can be utilized for purchase, establishment, maintenance, or expansion of any park, recreational services, programs, or facilities. In the past, we've utilized it, you might remember, last year for contributing to the purchase of our first two bicycle repair stations, which are now installed and look wonderful. We've also used it in the past to help purchase mowers that help the Public Works Department maintain our green spaces. But we also wanted to highlight, you can see a picture included in the report, this year we were able to update and refresh the mulch at the Stone Creek Neighborhood Park, which was thanks to a reminder from Councilmember Donnelly earlier this year. And that does look great. This is a picture from last week, I believe. And that is also one of the most common uses of that funding in the past historically is mulch and other landscaping supplies for our city parks. So with that, just wanted to illustrate for you what the allowed uses could be and some of the creative ways we've used those funds in the past. And then also illustrate in the financial section that we're standing at a little less than 20,000, but we expect to end the year with more than 20,000 in funds. And that's actually nearly a record high. The last couple of years have been our best position in terms of funds and resources available. So as we work on next year's budget, be thinking of parks and recreation items that would qualify for this funding, and feel free to suggest them anytime in the process. The second half of the report is just some text illustrating the progress. If you remember, back in 2021, late in the year, we approved entry into settlement agreements with other municipalities in the state for the opioid addiction fund settlements. So in that case, the, the funding is arranged to the state through class action activities and then remitted out to participating cities. We approved that participation. Late last year, we received our first two payments, and earlier this year, we received a few other payments. So we're standing at just under $15,000 in funds available. What we've heard from the Kansas Attorney General's Office is that we're expecting to receive two payments a month, or I'm sorry, a year for the next 15 years. That funding is restricted very, very tightly to specific approved uses, and that includes anything that prevents, reduces, treats, or mitigates effects of substance abuse and additional effects on the community from that. So some ideas that people have looked at are law enforcement funding, obviously, as they respond and treat Narcan kit purchases. But there are other creative ways to use the funds as well. You can partner with nonprofits and help arm or equip the, the people who work on the front lines and that every single day, and, and make the money go a little further in some cases. So as we look in the budget, this is the first year, actually, that this funding has been available to the city. So that'll be one thing when we look at options, we, we highlight that these funds are very specific in use, but are a shared resource that came from externally from our community. So we want to prioritize accordingly and have a plan on how to spend the dollars legally and effectively. So just food for thought as we move forward in the budget process. And we haven't spent any of those funds to date, nor do we anticipate advancing that this year without going through the budget planning process. Any questions about that page or that information? Okay. Moving on in the report, we have two project updates on Pages 7 and 8 for the Church Street Bridge and the Water Tower Construction Project. Neither report has an updated pay app, so both are in the same position they were last month, but we expect to receive those pay apps this, this week or next. And then Page 9 of the report illustrates our 2023 budget initiatives list. You can see a lot of checkboxes, which is great. We're making really good progress. They're just the first quarter. The highlighted item was approved earlier tonight, which was the funding assistance for LCDC as a, as a group. Moving to Page 10 of the report, our budget development timeline, we do have a CMIP work session scheduled for the second meeting in May, May 15. So that would start earlier than the normal meeting time. And we have a list of materials about capital and maintenance items for you to contemplate and talk through. Mr. Huskett will definitely be here, and probably our other directors, if they have projects as well. And if you have project ideas or want information in particular, please let us know before that meeting, if you can, things you're thinking about or want information about for, for that discussion. And that will kick off the busy summer, and, and we look forward to those efforts as we get ready to go. The rest of the report talks about expenditure budget remaining and fund balance levels for unique funds, and we're working on some updates to that section to help make it a little bit more palatable or interesting to you all. But happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions, counsel?
I would like to thank staff for the repairs there at the park, and that is 20 or 30 kids plus all the time there, and it was really helpful. I thank you. And I think one thing we always forget is how parks, not just that park, but all parks, are really a big asset of this community. And I wish we weren't so scattered all over with half a dozen different people owning them, but that is an asset that we should always keep in forefront. People use it, and that's our citizens using it a lot. So thank you for fixing that up.
Anyone else? Mr. Brackovich, did you have anything further?
No, Mayor, other than at the, sorry, at the dais, our hard copies of the most recent newsletter, city newsletter, that is available online as well. We'll try to do a, a social media push to encourage people to look at that, to follow the link, because if they do that, maybe they'll look at some of the previous ones as well. And I think we have about seven or eight previous, yeah, listed out there, so.
Very well done.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, yeah. Oh, Mayor, one other item. Thank you, Mr. Porter. Just to reaffirm, last meeting, Commissioner Mike Stevens was here talking about a joint meeting between the Board of County Commissioners, a work session, and the city council. So they indicated that May 1 does work for them for a 5:30 work session. They'll come here, and per our request, are working on a specific agenda so that we know what, what it is they'd like to discuss while they're here.
Cool. Thank you.
Yep.
City attorney agenda. Anything?
Just for the record, Mayor, Ms. Chrislick did ask me to point out that when she's absent, it takes two attorneys to take her place.
Okay. Surprises only two.
Yeah.
Item F, Mayor pro temp agenda. Ms. Stevens?
Well, this isn't official council business. I do want to point out that our local farmer's market, the Tongonoxi Farmer's Market, will resume on Thursday, May 11, and that's a wonderful asset for our community. So I encourage everyone to go down and participate and support our local farmers and vendors.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. City council agenda. Anyone have anything to add to the record? I have on my agenda the proclamation for Economic Development Week to be May 8 through 12, and I would appreciate counsel's motion to approve that and, and, I'm lost for the words, but I, I'd like the, the counsel's recommendation with that, please.
I would make a motion that we authorize the mayor to execute or sign the proclamation for Economic Development Week for May 8 through May 12, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. He made that sound much better than I did. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have nothing. Oh, I did have a question. Do we know if we got, if the Tongonoxi Arts Council got the art grant or not? Have we heard anything? Okay.
I, I don't believe we've heard anything from them.
All right. With that, Mr. Dale.
Yes. I, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. See you in a few weeks.